We live in a digital world, so why is riding the bus still so mundane? Well, with the brand-new MyStop mobile app, it doesn't have to be. With real-time bus arrival passenger notification technology, you can know exactly when the bus will arrive at your stop. No more waiting around. And when it gets there, mobile ticketing through Token Transit makes boarding quick and painless. The MyStop mobile app and MCAT, helping you on your journey.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, and I'm welcoming you to a work session, special work session of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County. It is an absolutely beautiful day today in Manatee County. And we're going to start off in our typical fashion. We're going to start this meeting by honoring God and by honoring this great nation. So today, to deliver the invocation, we have Joy Erwin Shetekoff?
Stacklift.
Shetekoff?
Stacklift.
Stacklift, I apologize. Joy Erwin Stacklift. I gave it a lot of effort. She is from High Flight, the High Flight Foundation. And we also have Steve Romero, to give the Pledge of Allegiance. Steve Romero works in our Property Management Division, and he's also a retired United States Navy Chief Petty Officer. He was in the Navy and Marine, he received a Navy and Marine Corps Commendation Medal, Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, two Sea Service Deployment Medals, Overseas Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Medal, four Armed Services Reserve Medal, Expert Rifle and Pistol Medal, Matarious Unit Commendation, and Command Battle E Medal. Four overseas mobilizations, one stateside mobilization, 2007, 2008. He was in Bahrain, another place that I cannot pronounce, in the United Arab Emirates. And he served our nation for fifteen and a half years. And he'll be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, if you're able, please stand.
Okay. Thank you for this special opportunity to be with you. County Commissioners, I appreciate the invitation. I'm just going to honor God. But just since we have such a distinguished man that I am standing beside here, I just want to honor my father too, who was an Apollo 15 astronaut who landed on the moon. And here, yeah, we have a moon rock that went right over here at the, yeah, right over here at South Florida Museum. So I am just really grateful to be with you. This is really a special day as I hear all the things that you're doing and then what you're discussing. So we need God's help in all things. So with that, Father God, I just thank you that, that our county commissioner has asked to honor you first because we need wisdom. And these who have come to serve the people here, Father, to represent justice and righteousness in the land, that all people would be taken care of. Father, we ask that you would impart your wisdom from above, that is beyond them, Father, because they need it, Father. Every decision they make, I'm asking and inviting you in so that you will help them to do what is right and just, Father, for all peoples in Manatee County. So I bless them. I thank you for their families. Father, I ask that you would bless their families, that they would feel your closeness to them and your protection. We thank you for the people that are in Manatee County, and we ask that you would send a special blessing for them as well, Father, in the name of Jesus. Thank you, Father.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Stephen. Thank you so much for your service to this country as well as to our county. And Joy, thank you for the beautiful prayer. And what an appropriate name. All right, we're going to move to our first order of business, which is a sort of a special, unique order of business to start off a meeting or a workshop. We're going to go to the county attorney for the swearing-in of our new county commissioner for District Five, who will be Ray Turner, who was recently appointed by Governor Ron DeSantis. Mr. Clegg?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am County Attorney Bill Clegg, and it is my honor and pleasure to ask Mr. Turner and his company to join us here at the podium for his oath of office. So if you would all come down, please, and the best place for you to stand again would be here, and then you should be just right here and kind of facing her. So whenever you're ready, you may administer the oath, ma'am.
Okay. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold, to hold office under the Constitution of the state.
To hold office under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties of.
Perform the duties of.
Manatee County Board.
Manatee County Board.
Of Commissioners District Five.
Of Commissioners District Five.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Very well done. That was perfect. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our first matter of business. So I understand you'd like to take a brief recess.
Yes, you, you're all business there. Appreciate you doing that so quickly. We're going to take a 15-minute recess to allow us to arrange the dais appropriately, allow for some photographs, and allow for Commissioner Turner to speak to the press if he so chooses. So we're in recess for 15 minutes.
Testing, testing. Good. How would you want me to start?
Ladies and gentlemen, we want to present to Commissioner Ray Turner. Members of the media.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm honored that Governor DeSantis appointed me for this position. I'm really excited. You know, District Five is one of the most desirable areas in the whole country to live. So I take that responsibility really serious. Lived there 20 years, it served myself and our family really well. Looking forward to getting up to speed. So after spending some time on the Planning Commission, what I realized is no leader can do it by themselves, and we have a great team behind us. The staff is amazing. So my acclamation will be a lot shorter due to the staff, where I can get up to speed on what the constituents' concerns are, what's on the table, all that kind of thing. So if you've got any other questions?
What are some of the constituent concerns?
Well, that's what the acclamation is. I don't know yet. I'll let you know. Well, first of all, the first thing is to serve the community, serve the residents the best way I can. That's number one. I know, maybe I'm crazy. No, no, I'm in a, I'm in an age group now where you can see, you know, I'd like to be stand, stand up and be counted for. And so, you know, I'd like to contribute back to the community that served me so well. You know, you get to a point where you can't wait for other people to do it. You've got to do it yourself. So that was kind of the, the big move. Any other questions? Yeah, it was, it's exciting. It's a bigger deal than what I realized, actually, when you're standing here.
Are you tough enough to do this job? It's a tough job.
It is. Look at me, do I look weak? Yeah. Anything else? Thank you.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We are now a full board. Well, Commissioner Ballard will be here any moment, and then we'll be, here we are. We're now a full board, and Commissioner Cruz. And welcome, Commissioner Turner. We have two guests that are here today who would like to be able to come up to address the board regarding Commissioner Turner's swearing-in. We have Tara Polton, who is now the Field Director for Congressman Vern Buchanan's office, and he's up in DC, I'm sure, fighting the good fight up there, trying to get to the bottom of all the Biden family of corruption nonsense. So, but she came here today to represent him and to read a letter welcoming Commissioner Turner. Ma'am?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, and congratulations, Commissioner Turner. I am here representing-
If there is a separate contract. So, the alternative would be to have just this franchise hauler agreement cover those services and then have a separate agreement for the recyclables processing. The second really big advantage of doing the two contracts is the availability of bidders. So, there's not as many potential bidders that could cover both scopes of service so that I believe that we're going to get a much more competitive bid for the waste hauler services by taking that recyclables processing out of that contract.
I'm going to chime in, that makes sense and I like that. I also am assuming that when we approach the countywide bid for recycling, that we'll be able to include municipalities into that bid as well because you have the city of, it's become so expensive, you know, that you have examples like the city of Bradenton that it's just become so cost prohibitive that they're not able to continue recycling. And I've talked to the mayor in Palmetto and it's coming for them, they just haven't reached the end of their agreements yet. So, all these other smaller municipalities are ultimately going to end up in the same position. So, it makes sense if we can bring them into the fold, I'm assuming that, you know, the larger amount of bulk that you have, that the price is going to come down.
Yeah, and I'm looking back at Jacob Erickson, our procurement official, just to make sure that that is possible. So, we will certainly do that going forward.
Okay, I'm sure that's why the mayor is still sitting here. I don't know if he's really wanting to watch Ray's whole first meeting, I think he's more interested in recycling. So, all right, thank you.
All right, the next is the frequency question. So, the current service is twice a week for garbage. The alternative for that would be to shift to a once a week for garbage. There are some advantages, obviously, for the twice a week or the once a week. The once a week does allow us to have a lower price for customers, but more importantly, it allows to align services so that garbage pickup, recycling, and yard waste can all happen on the same day so that you don't have various services out on the street, potentially up to four days a week, that occurs today. So, being able to consolidate that and limit truck traffic throughout the neighborhoods, fewer trucks with the 1-1-1 service, there's environmental benefits, there's less wear and tear on our roads, and there's just less truck traffic in the neighborhoods.
Okay, Commissioner Ron.
Hey Evan, real quick on the 1-1-1, I mean, I think it's a great idea. I mean, we'll go to the bigger cans on the garbage side, we'll retain the same big blue bins for recycling. And then, the yard waste, doesn't the yard waste though expand a little bit for the bulk pickup of the yard waste to where instead of going, I mean, they can have more there than they would when we were doing a 2-1-1? And also, have we got any feedback from the citizens on the 1-1-1? I know I've quizzed people in my district, some are for, some are against, but I think, you know, everybody agrees that change is coming with this type of stuff and, you know, it'll, everybody will get it done. But have we got any feedback from any of the citizens or anything on that?
So, we haven't done any sort of formal survey on the difference and the preference between the two. Anecdotally, the information that we have gotten back is mostly that what we've heard is that there hasn't been that much of a concern going to a 1-1-1.
And then, the 1-1-1 also, that would be completely automated too with the new cans that would come. And are the citizens, doing a bigger trash can, garbage cans, are the citizens going to absorb that cost or is that something we're going to absorb as we go replace by zone by zone? Will we absorb that cost on those cans?
So, the way that we envision it going forward would be to purchase the carts, provide those to residents, and then, of course, those costs would have to be spread across the bill. So, we would recover those costs in the monthly fee that we charge. But they would not be responsible for purchasing the new cart out of their pocket. Yeah. And I will say that the carts that we're looking at are very, they have a much longer lifespan than the one you may find at a big box store that, right now, people who go out to purchase a cart may have to replace that on a regular basis. These carts that we're looking at would have more of a 10 to 15-year lifespan.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden, oh, okay, Commissioner Bearden.
Is there something, let's just say like, I don't know, we start off with the 1-1-1 option, but for some reason, it doesn't work out for us, you know, we get phone calls, whatever, it's just not working. Is there an ability to change that to the two times a week? That, a possibility of being able to change that to two times a week if we have to make a shift? With that option in there is what I'm asking.
Honestly, I'd want to talk to the procurement official and the county attorney's office on any sort of major change like that to the scope of service within a contract of what might be possible. It might be possible to do a change order. I wouldn't want to speculate before we had more in-depth conversations about what might be possible there.
My only thing is, is if we do this for two years or three years and it doesn't happen to work out the way that we planned it to work out, based on, you know, the accumulation of certain trash, I want to have something, some sort of flexibility if we have to make that shift, just for future reference.
We will look into that before we bring this back to the board for a final decision.
All right, thank you, sir. I'm next on the board, then Satcher, and then I believe Turner is trying to get on the board. So...
One question.
Well, your third on the speaking order, sir. That's all right, we'll get you there.
I'm new, sir.
You are, you are.
I'm completely ignorant, somebody.
So, if we do, if we go with one time, you know, one time a week pickup, 1-1-1, and you may have said this and I missed it, garbage, recycling, and yard waste, everything would fall on the same day for a customer, right?
That's correct.
Because that was probably my favorite part of that.
Yes.
Was that, you know, I only have to remember one day at this point, like, if I miss Wednesdays, man, I'm in trouble. Okay, I like that about it. And I don't see on here a collection of commercial at night, which I am a very strong advocate of, and I've heard some, I've received some pushback on that from staff. I don't personally feel like staff is trying hard enough to make that work and make that happen. So, I'm just going to reiterate again that I feel that commercial being picked up at night is, and maybe I'm the only one, maybe I'm just shouting into an empty room here. It's happened before. But I think that there's benefits to it, commercial being picked up at night, I think we're getting, you know, big, slow-moving vehicles off of our main arteries because that's where most of our commercial is, that are pulling on and off and constantly in and out of traffic. I think it's going to help us with traffic tremendously, and I think it's going to enable, to some extent, certainly it's going to have to enable, because we're all top-load vehicles if we're going automated at this point, no rear loads if we do 1-1-1. So, then it's going to enable the, you know, to be able to use the same vehicle at night and then again during the day, and I think it's going to lessen the amount of equipment that's going to have to be purchased right out of the gate. And maybe I'm wrong on all these points, but this is, you know, this is the way I see it. So, what do you have to say about that, sir?
We will look into that more before we bring it back to the board for a final decision.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Satcher and then Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, for, I mean, we see the lay of the land, it's headed to, seems like, once a week pickup. For those that are, say they're filling up their cans twice a week, and they've got, you know, they're normally putting bags beside the cans, you know, which of course there's a person there to just grab those and throw them in now. So, it'll be quite a change for some, you know, families or some businesses. Is there a chance, would it be, this be the time to talk about, to where if somebody knows upfront, I'm going to be needing two cans, to where we could work that into this whole deal? Are we going to kind of triple-hit people, like, first of all, we're not picking up twice, second of all, you know, you can't put a bag beside and, you know, and then third of all, you've got more than fits in one can, pay me 100 bucks, plus I'm using, plus I'm raising your overall rate? Are we just going to, you know, body blow, you know, a year from now to every, or can we make a plan that could make it part of the overall contract that someone could get two cans upfront?
We can certainly do that, and in addition, we can look at larger cans. So, if somebody does not want a 64-gallon because that's not going to be enough for them, we can look at a 95-gallon. But there is the potential of building that into the bid to have a second pickup price as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I mean, obviously I'm new to this, but I'm looking at it with the 1-1-1, and then, I think everybody seems to be on the same page as far as let's flush this out as much as possible. My concern with having a contingency of moving it to something else like a two would be, the whole cost would be massive. So, I don't think that's a contingency that we can build into this. What's your thought?
I believe you're correct that if we build that into the contract and the bid upfront, we may get some manipulation of pricing, that if it were allowed per a change order, we would have to negotiate that in good faith with them.
Right, and costs being so prohibitive right now, I think we just lose leverage trying to do that. So, if we can vet it out as much as possible, on the front side, we know that all our concerns are, with our constituents are covered, would be the best way to negotiate. Would that be right?
I, full agreement, sir.
Okay.
I'm going to throw one more thing in there. When I was running for office, for this office, the only office I ever ran for, I was at one of these meetings and it was sort of like this, I think there were two people in the audience, and the board got into a discussion about the fact that our, that our landfill is open and that we collect trash on Martin Luther King Day. And there was a commissioner who wanted to be closed on Martin Luther King Day, but the landfill was open, and so, as the agreement says, that when the landfill is open, they have to collect, and the attorney was worried that you start to open this up, it's a big contract, and didn't want to get into the weeds on it. And I know this is just sort of a small item, but he's like one of my favorite Americans, and so I'm pretty knowledgeable on Martin Luther King, and one of the facts about his death is that he was in Memphis advocating for solid, for waste collecting, for solid waste collection workers. That's actually literally what he was doing when he died. And, you know, people who are at banks and people in this building and all these other people have Martin Luther King Day off, but the people who are collecting the garbage that he literally died trying to protect, you know, and defend, didn't have the day off. And it just seemed pretty hypocritical and ironic to me. Is, I don't know if there's any objection from the board, but I would like to ensure that in the next contract, that it has worked in there, that not just are we not collecting, but I want to ensure the landfill is closed going forward on Martin Luther King Day as well. If other municipalities want to collect, they can, but, you know, they're not going to be able to drop it off at our place. So, is that something that's doable?
We can absolutely include that in the new contract, and we can also speak with our existing waste haulers to see if that's a possibility that we could negotiate in good faith for no cost. Does any board member have an issue or object to that at all?
Not at all.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
No one else is on the board, sir.
All right. So, bulk item pickup, I think is our next topic. So, right now, there is unlimited bulk item pickup that is included in the monthly fee that people pay for their solid waste services. The alternative to that would be an on-call system so that if somebody has a refrigerator or a couch to pick up, they would call a number, arrange for the pickup, and establish, we would establish a user-pay system so that those costs are directed to the people who are using the service and not necessarily spread across the entire population who may not be using the service.
Sure. Hey Evan, is it, is the bulk cost going to be based on what they're picking up or is it going to be just a flat fee, 100 bucks, we'll pick up whatever, we know we'll pick up refrigerators, couches, furniture, whatever it's going to be, so it's going to be a flat fee? Or is it going to be some type of tiered process?
We would look to our consultant to help us establish that system based on the experience of other counties and municipalities. I don't know right now whether it would be a flat fee or if there'd be maybe a sliding tier based on size or weight, but whatever it may be, that's going to be baked into the RFP and the pricing that we receive so that if there's a desire for it to be a flat fee by the board, you know, we can try to implement it that way, or if you want to see a tier, we can see if that would be appropriate as well.
So, on the bulk call, when a person calls in and says, hey, I got a couch to pick up, is it, that's just going to be any day of the week, anytime that's ready or whatever? Or is it going to be on the same day that they had to do the 1-1-1 or whatever? So, it'd be on that day still, it's just, hey, I just moved my refrigerator down the curb, can you come get it?
Correct. Correct. So, when the call goes in, that would then be scheduled based on the next available bulk pickup round. So, that would be communicated to the resident to say, make sure to have your couch out on such and such a day. It would be, I believe, one day per week where it would be available in each neighborhood, but it would not, we would make sure that the conditions in the contract require it to be picked up within a certain number of days.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, my, Commissioner, my only concern about the flat fee would be what Evan has found and Courtney has found is that there's only a tiny percentage, like 1% or 2% of prop parcels that are utilizing the free bulk, and it's like the same people, right? And they're, it's typically slum lords and they're putting like a huge amount out. And so, what worries me is that if we do a flat fee, then the person who's only putting like one couch out every once in a while, that fee that you're charging for everybody, they're going to ultimately end up subsidizing, sort of what we're trying to get out of now is, everybody subsidizing these small number of property owners.
$2 percent.
Oh, yes, sir.
I have no problem with either fee way, I really don't. I mean, I'll just give you an idea of what they were looking at as to how they were structuring the whole pickup. I don't think it was a sliding scale or a flat fee, I don't care. What's best for the county, what's best for haulers, and what's best, sorry, Mike, all right.
Whatever's best for the citizens, I really don't care which way we go.
Okay.
It's just going to be a board decision on how we do that, so.
Okay.
I agree with you, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Ballard.
So, I know that, don't we have a once-a-year, like, large pickup right now? So, how, I don't really under, so it says bulk unlimited with garbage, and then it would be bulk on-call, how does that, how does that differ?
Yes, it's a good question. So, right now, there is a one-free annual that is in our contracts, up to, I believe, 60 cubic yards.
Which is huge.
It's enormous. The bulk item pickup is item by item.
Okay.
So, that would just be an individual couch or whatever it may be. The one-free annual is more if somebody's cleaning out an entire apartment.
Okay.
And just throwing everything out or doing renovations and getting rid of everything from that structure.
I understand. So, would it be possible to include just the bulk items, like, regular people who are getting rid of a couch or something like that, and then change the annual to an on-call?
Absolutely.
Do you have any idea what the expense would look like for that?
Off the top of my head, I know we had those numbers, I don't know that we had those at our fingertips.
It was $30 an item, but I did want to, can I offer a point of clarification for a moment? And I think you did a good job kind of dividing, splitting them, but the data that you provided, Chairman, is for that one-time annual.
Right.
And so, the one-time annual and just, the one-time annual would be, as Evan stated, you know, dumping, basically dropping off a dumpster, a 60-cubic-yard dumpster for someone to dump all of their stuff in once a year. And what we were seeing is, people would call those in for their neighbors and, you know, and use all of those over and over again. So, that's one, and I think that would be sort of in the hundreds of dollars is what I think it came up to last, last time we did this. We saw those numbers. With the bulk pickup, though, the bulk pickup is, just like Commissioner Ballard said, dropping off a couch, and that was about $30, and I think it went $25 to $35, but in that realm per item. The one concern that I think we should bring up, though, is when you do an automated trash collection, if that's the way that the commission wants to go, you create a manual pickup for those items. And so, that does create a little bit of a, if you don't, if you don't coordinate those, it's a different type of truck. So, it's not quite as easy as we pick up your trash and we'll just grab your couch while we're there.
Okay. So, if I, so it sounds like it would be, if we move to the automated pickup, which I think everyone wants to do, it would be, it would be prudent to change the bulk pickup to you have to call in and while we're at it, a small fee is possibly appropriate. Okay, thank you.
All right. So, are they calling in? I'm sorry. So, do they call into the county or do they call into the, like, waste management, whoever it might be?
We would have a new work order system in place that we're implementing as we speak that'll be in place when this new contract takes effect. And basically, they would go online, submit it or call in, and then that work order would get sent directly to whichever hauler is in that area.
Okay.
Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, I don't know as far as the, you know, software that it might require, how hard it would be to keep up with, but I would love to see one free, not 60 yards, but, you know, you've got a couch and a TV that you're done with, one free pickup, so that people aren't, you know, having to deal with that and getting a huge amount. And then, if they're calling over and over again, beyond that, then we charge them, so...
We can certainly look into that.
I don't know if that, yeah, if you could, if they could keep up with it, that seems to be real reasonable to me.
[inaudible]
Included in the overall rate and in the contract, one pickup included in the overall rate would be neat to see, but not a hill I'm going to dial.
Mr. Pilochowski.
All right. So, the last item on the list here is the method of collection, which has been referenced already. It's, currently, we do manual collection, the alternative is automated connect, collection. It doesn't necessarily mean that it goes with the 2-1-1 or 1-1-1, you can do automated 2-1-1 if that was the desire. The advantages with automated collection are really across the board. There's a lot of difficulties hiring that second person on a garbage truck who would be doing the manual collection. There's the insurance liability of just having that other person there, and then, it's really the industry standard, you know, as we look across other municipalities, other jurisdictions, automated service is where the industry is going. Any further questions?
[inaudible]
Okay. So, a quick, quick status report on the extension itself, the two-year extension that's been signed. We are having ongoing discussions with Waste Pro and Waste Management, who are going to be continuing to provide a service during that period. There will be a necessary change in some collection days. So, just based on the last 15 years and how development patterns have shifted in the county during that time, we want to work with them to rebalance collection days to make sure that across the board, there's approximately the same number of residents who are getting those services each day. Back of the envelope, we're looking at maybe about 6,000, 7,000 people who are going to get a different day for their collection. So, we'll work with both Waste Pro and Waste Management on messaging for those people, but it will ensure that we have a better quality of service by not overburdening the waste collectors on a specific day. So, in addition to that, in our conversations with Waste Pro and Waste Management, for the actual extension period and those negotiations that we had, there were a lot of promises made about new equipment, hiring programs, employee retention programs, and how they were proposing to provide a continuing level of service acceptable to the county during this two-year extension. So, we're going to be working with them to make sure to track the progress on those projects or those initiatives that they have, as well as just the overall level of service and quality of service that they are providing and providing regular updates to the board. Any last questions on this before we move on to solid waste rates? All right, moving on.
Yeah, what do you want, what do you want from direction before we move on? It's a good point Commissioner Ballard made. Let's back it up another slide, another slide. Okay. Do you want us to go down this list and give you some consensus on each of these, each of these items here?
If that is allowed within the work session, that would be ideal.
I mean, we can talk, we're here, we can't cast a vote, nothing's binding. But, I mean, when it comes to service areas, does anyone have any comments on the service areas that were shown? Do they want to make any changes to those service areas? They're the same existing service areas, right?
Yes, sir.
So, is everyone happy with the current service areas, the map? Okay.
I, yeah, I don't have any, any issue with that.
And just a, just a point of clarification, too. So, once we get some sort of, I guess I would say there is no vote today, but just some sort of an idea of where, you know, where your heads are at, we will likely come back one more time, and then we would come back with the contract for your approval, the RFP prior to going out.
Yeah.
Which we hope to get out in November of this year. So, just to give you an idea of timeline.
Okay.
So...
So, you'll come back in November?
November with the draft RFP for the boards approval.
With the draft, okay. So, yes, we're going to try and give you some solid direction here so you can get work done between now and November when you bring us a draft. So, service areas, it sounds like everyone is happy with that. Recycling, essentially Evan says he wants to pull recycling out of this negotiation, he wants to come back and negotiate recycling after this act, right, or separately from solid waste collection, is my understanding.
Recycling processing, and so to be clear, recycling collection would still happen as part of this contract. Recycling processing would be sep, the proposal is doing it separate. Right now, it's with the collection, and the problem is, is that there's, there's revenue, not a lot, that's collected that we never see. So, if we do it separately, we actually see what those costs are and what the benefits are in a separate contract, and it could, it could add to, you know, lower costs.
Well, help me understand, I mean, Waste Pro is the only one, the only company that's invested in a recycling, Murph. You're going to have, where does Waste Management take the recycling now? Because they collect it now. Are they taking it to Waste Pro?
Single stream facility.
Single stream.
Yeah, it's a single stream facility.
Single stream facility.
Yeah.
I have no idea, but that's a Greek to me.
Like, all of the recycling goes to one?
All of the recycling goes to one place, if that's what we're saying.
It's a commercial facility in Sarasota, and I think they have a higher capacity, correct?
Okay, so they're taking, or I don't mind, you can take all the garbage of ours to Sarasota you want. So, that's fine. All right, so they're taking it to Sarasota. So, then, it sounds like that would sort of basically ultimately continue, is that cost-effective or, oh, we're going to bid it out to one?
We, the proposal would be to bid it out and allow others to...
So, we may force Waste, we may force Waste Management or the other company, which I don't remember the acronym, to bring their, if we decide Waste Pro, let's say we decided it's Waste Pro because they're in Manatee County, just pulling that out of my hat, right? So, then Waste Management would have to bring their, the recycling that they collect to the Waste Pro facility?
That is the way that would work, yes.
Okay. And the city of Bradenton, I'm assuming, would then bring theirs, would just collect and bring theirs to Waste, or to whatever facility as well.
Correct.
Okay.
So...
Mr. Commissioner Turner.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think what Courtney's saying, if we break out the processing piece, it's not a mystery number, right? And so, regardless of what this, so, we take that piece out, now it's not a mystery, now we can negotiate.
I don't want to see recycling as a moneymaker because, because I've learned a lot in my last couple of years with Mitch and with Bethany, but right now, you know, when you bring in recycling, the processing of it is a savings. Obviously, collection costs money, and so that ends up, it doesn't end up being a moneymaker, but...
It's like transit, you're not going to make money on recycling, you're just trying to control the bleeding as much as possible.
And so, the problem now is any profit or revenue that we see is hidden. We don't know, it's not separated out. And so, the plan is if we were to contract it out separately, that those numbers would be knowns now. We would see what we're, what...
This helps us with the negotiation.
Correct.
Okay.
Mystery number.
All right, well, after further clarification, is everyone okay with the plan going forward with recycling?
Yes.
Okay.
Separate processing contract.
Yes, separate processing contract. Okay. All right, let's get to the fun stuff. Frequency is next on the list. Does anyone object to, because we had multiple people advocate for 1-1-1, same-day service for all materials, less environmental impact, less street wear and tear, it encourages recycling are the perks. People don't like change, that's the negative. I think we can summarize that in one negative. I'm for 1-1-1, I know a few others were, is there anyone who is objecting to 1-1-1?
I'm good with 1-1-1 as long as we have a really good campaign over the next couple of years to make sure that people are aware of what the changes are going to look like, that they're going to have a bigger cart that they're not paying for upfront, et cetera. And then, I think we had also discussed a second free recycling cart upon request.
Yes.
So, just make, making that known.
Nothing's free, as Commissioner Bearden pointed out.
True, true.
Nothing is free.
I didn't say it's free.
A... A.
So the, the carts.
Opt.
Well, the carts, well, I mean, nothing's free, literally, they, you know, the, the taxpayers are paying for this. But the carts will not be a one-time assessed fee, they will be distributed over the course of the life of the, the container, or whatever.
That, that is correct.
What is the life of the container?
Ten to 15 years for these.
How much does a container cost?
Our price, I believe, is around a hundred dollars, a little less than a hundred dollars.
So we're down to less than a dollar a month?
Yeah.
Okay, I can, I can handle that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so is anyone objecting then to moving forward with 1-1-1, as long as Evan and, you know, I'm sure Casey and, and all of our communications team are going to have a, a good, positive, get out in front of it when the time is right, you know, campaign? And then, of course, the email for any complaints will, will be Evan's email. Okay, Commissioner Thatcher. Commissioner Thatcher, you're on the board, sir.
Yeah, I, I have no objections, just with the caveat that Commissioner Ballard alluded to, that people can comp or include the cans that they need upfront. And I just feel like that's going to, for the complaints that we do receive, for the people that are unhappy, that's going to be so great for us to be able to say, oh, well, you can actually just let us know, we'll put you on the list and we'll bring you an extra can, I know it's once a week, but you're still taken care of.
Sure.
You know, and it's part of your contract.
And just in my head, that's like 75 cents a month for a can.
Right.
Well, if you had two cans, then it's 75 cents times two, it's a buck fifty, buck fifty a month for two cans. And, you know.
Not so bad.
That's considerable. Commissioner Bearden is on the board, sir.
I just, as I discussed with Evan earlier, I just wanted to see if we could put some type of stipulation in, in, in the paperwork in case we ever, if, if this were to happen to blow back on us, because people are just so angry. You know what I mean? And it's, and it becomes a massive amount of people because we went to 1-1. Just maybe something stipulated that possibility of us being able to change based on, you know, certain costs that would increase if we go to, to 2-2, because it's, after three years, this thing is, we've got pitchforks out there and people wanting to burn the building down, just something in place to, you know, have that shift just in case.
Can you, can you look into flexi, the flexibility options?
Flexibility options, yeah.
Get back to Commissioner Bearden on that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
I, I'm, but I, but I am good, just so you know, I'm good with the 1-1.
Cruz and Ron, Commissioner Cruz.
And obviously, this all comes down to the contract. I mean, one of these days, maybe we'll say, I mean, we keep having these work sessions here, and I think we all keep saying the same thing. At some point, we need to make a, a decision, though. I mean, I understand that the pitchfork thing, but I mean, is there cost associated with it, and to previous conversations? If they think that they're going to be able to potentially get to a, a 2 and jack our price up, we know we're only going to use it if we have pitchforks. If I was them, not to negotiate on their behalf, but they're not idiots, that's going to be much more expensive, because they know we're only going to do it if we're literally getting threatened with getting thrown out of office and protests in the front, and they will pay anything to do it. So i, i, I don't see that being a realist. I think at some point, this board just needs to make actual decisions and, and stick with them. Otherwise, we would have decided this six months ago and already have a long-term contract in place. Now we just seem like we're respinning our wheels with the same options again for a future contract. But again, we need to make a decision. Stipulations are great, but they're expensive, it's what's happening right now. We stipulated, we'd rather have another extension instead of a long-term contract, and that's going to come back and cost everybody more money because we stipulated things and gave contingencies.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would like to rip the Band-Aid off this thing and move this process forward, it's been kicked around long enough. I think you see with the 1-1-1, though, I think the citizens will agree that it has less garbage trucks out on the streets, that's what I keep hearing, let's get these garbage trucks out the street, they're leaking garbage, they're leaking oil, they're leaking gas everywhere and whatnot, so I, I think we just, we should move forward on the 1-1-1, is my opinion, and negotiate out, and let's just go and get it done, rip the Band-Aid off like Commissioner Cruz is pretty much saying, and move forward on this.
I think those are the city trucks that you're thinking about there, Commissioner.
Agreed.
Our guys are doing a stand-up job.
But at least they don't drop recyclables on the ground.
Yeah, there's no recyclables falling on the ground. Okay, so on the frequency, the frequency issue, 1-1-1, no one spoke against 1-1-1. Okay, I mean, nobody loves it, but, but that's where we're at. Okay, some people love it, some don't love it.
Can I speak to the cans for a moment?
If you want to, I mean, we're moving right along and you're getting everything you want, I don't know if I, you can only screw it up.
Well, I just wanted to, I just want to provide a point of clarification on that too, just so everyone's aware, so, and we briefed many of you already.
Snatching defeat from the jaws of victory.
So I know Commissioner Turner's new, but, so the cans, the thought is, there's, there's a few options, and I don't know if you wanted to get into the weeds today, but you can provide another can for garbage, you can provide another can for recycling. And so right now, obviously, everyone has to provide their own cans for their trash collection, because it's manual. But the recycling cans, if you wanted a second can, you can call in and you can get a second can. I actually just talked to someone recently who just got a second recycling can, and they said for the first time, for my family of like six or seven people, that I was able to fit everything in my one trash can this week. And so I think the recycling also, we had talked about internally with staff, is to push recycling, which also buys back time on the landfill, to comp an additional recycling can and make sure that's built in, we can also really move forward with our team in pushing recycling, educating the public, and trying to get that initiative moving forward.
And that was specifically what I was speaking, oh, what?
Are you on?
I should be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was specifically one of the things that I was speaking to earlier about the extra recycling can being comped, or whatever you want to, whatever you want to call it. But yeah, I, I, I personally really agree with that, and I think there are a lot of, a lot of upsides to that, and we're already currently doing it, correct?
All right, so frequency, we have a consensus. Bulk items, this got sort of convoluted. Evan, do you want to give me a 15-second, 100,000-foot view of bulk items?
So bulk items, the, the on-call system would have the customers who call in pay for the specific item that they pick up, rather than spread that across and include it in the monthly fee.
Everybody else subsidizes it, right? So be like a user fee, a couch is like 30 bucks, that's what I took out of it.
Correct.
Okay. And then the, the bulk, is that just a single item, but then bulk, like bringing in a dumpster or whatnot, also a separate user fee, you'd have to call in?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have an issue or objection to that plan?
No, I have several questions.
Commissioner Ron has an objection.
The fee for, whatever the fee's going to be, sliding scale, flat, is that going to be paid the time they call in to have the pickup, or is it going to be just put on their bill and, you know, just be on the, the utility bill?
We could structure that in a couple of different ways. I believe when we were looking at the, the full contract, it was going to be billed directly by the, the hauler, so that it would be separate from the monthly bill that people have received now.
Okay, so they'll just get a separate bill in the mail or online or whatever, and here's what you got to pay us this month if you don't pay us?
And, and we'll look into the details on that, about what is going to be the most efficient way to make sure that we, we get those bills out to people.
And then the question was asked earlier, when they call in, are they going to be calling in, are they going to call in like the 3-1-1 and say, hey, I got a bulk pickup, and that'll disseminate like stuff does now, or will it be, they're going to call the, the hauler directly and say, hey, can you come get this refrigerator off my front yard?
Again, this, this, we have a little bit of flexibility on with the, the new customer information system that we're putting in place, as well as some of the advances in our, our billing systems. I believe we're going to have the ability to maybe even do both, where they could call into utilities to arrange for that, or the, the haulers and the systems at some point in the not-too-distant future will be integrated, so that they're going to be talking to each other.
Because I, I, what I'd do is have a little more control over that than the hauler, because all I need is the, they call the hauler, hauler, show it, yeah, we'll be there, yeah, we'll be there, yeah, we'll be there, and then sitting out there now, I got a citizen calling me going, I called these guys four times and nobody's coming to pick up my refrigerator in my front yard.
Yes, and that is, that is our concern as well, that we want to make sure that we are aware of any of those calls that go in, at the very least, so that we can follow up on the, the non-responsive events.
All right, so we'll use the, the personal cell phones of the at-large commissioners for, for those requests.
Doesn't typically work out that way, though.
We'll, we'll vote on that, see how it works out. All right, and then method of collection, manual or automated? Automated, is anyone, is anyone opposed to automation?
No.
Okay, Evan, you have pretty good direction here on all of these.
Kevin, thank you.
We'll see you next week with a draft, right? Okay, Jason, Jack, Bearden.
Well, I mean, we're talking about the phone calls, right, with Commissioner Ron over here. Is there a way to put, we have an app that maybe that could be easier to streamline it through a seller or whatever it might be, that's what we're talking about? Us being able to do?
We are looking at those, those possibilities, we are in the process of rolling out a, a new customer, customer information system, which is going to allow for much more self-service by, by residents, not just for solid waste, but for water and wastewater as well.
And we'll notify the status as it's in the queue.
Exactly.
Got it, okay, awesome.
All right, very good. Evan, you can move us along then, sir.
All right. Now to the, the rate study. So this slide shows the projected expenditures that we have in solid waste for FY '23 through FY '25. You can see a, a large jump for FY '24 and '25. It's due to three main reasons, and I know the numbers are small, so you may not be able to see it on your screens, but the, the darkest blue, the bottom column there, that is for the, the extensions. So during the two-year process, or the two-year extension, the, the rates have, are going to have to be increased in order to cover that. The next column up is stormwater, so the increased stormwater transfer, solid waste bills is where we pay for stormwater, so that increase in the budget is reflected here in this slide. And then a, one little blip on that next column up in FY '24, there's a $4 million capital project that we are proposing to complete with these revenues, not with debt, and that is for a gas expansion system at our current landfill, so it's, it's work that we absolutely need to do. So you can see it jumps up in FY '24, but then it comes right back down in FY '25. Next, next slide. So the red columns are the, the takeaway here.
Oh.
The, actually, the, the black line in the middle.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ron is still learning the technology.
Well, the presentation won't come up either, every time I try downloads, is try again. Real quick, Evan, can you back a slide? Under the collections, you're saying that the increase in the collection is due to the, just the extension? If we were to have gone ahead and had a contract written, would those fees have been less?
I haven't finished the, the, that comparison to include the stormwater fees, because we hadn't included that when we were talking about the, the longer-term extension. It's going to be really neck and neck, the, the, the fee that the average resident is going to pay in FY '24 under this extension versus the other contract, it's approximately equal to each other. Now, the level of service provided during the extension period is what everyone has come to expect, so it's continuing on that, the 2-1-1 service during that, that two-year extension. So there's, it's a little bit of an apples-to-oranges comparison.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, so the, the blue line on top, that is just the expenditures, projected expenditures from the previous slide. The black line is the projected revenues if there is no rate increase, and then each of those red columns at the bottom, that is the, the projected deficit for each of those years. So you can see in FY '23, we're already running a deficit, and it, it gets significantly worse in FY '24 and '25 if we don't make any change to rates. Here, it's the, just a, a total view, we won't get into too many of the details, the important column here is the one in yellow, that is our unrestricted surplus, and you can see in FY '24 and '25, we go significantly negative. So this is evidence, we, we do not have the, the funds within our current solid waste fund to, to cover this and be able to proceed without a rate, rate increase. This is a, a table showing what the projected bills would be for our residents. The numbers have to be finalized still, I apologize, they're not completely finalized, and we'll make sure to get those tightened up before we bring this back to the board. But for context, I do want to point out that in 2008, we had a monthly waste bill for people of $12.77. In 2015, we had a, a bill of $14.33, and we have maintained that rate since 2015. So we have been very fortunate, having some of the lowest solid waste rates across the state, and in, in honesty, seeing how the industry is headed, even during this two-year extension, we still have very competitive rates.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Evan, can you break down for us, with, with our new increase going into '24 and '25, can you break down, or can you tell us where we are in comparison with Sarasota, Hillsborough, Pinellas, and our surrounding counties, and as far as where we, we're at on that, that scale, where, where we rank on our new fees?
So I, I don't have that slide or tho, those numbers in, in my back pocket. It would be approximately what we had presented back when we were looking at the full contract in, I believe, March. During those conversations, it was evident that in the new contract, we've continued to have very competitive rates across the, the area and across the state. We can polish that, make an update, and make sure that that comes back to the board when you consider a vote on any rate increase. Thank you. Next slide. So this is assuming that the proposed rate increase goes through, as shown on the previous slide. The, you can see that the yellow column goes away, so we're really balancing and, and it's, it's making sure that we have revenue sufficiency for FY '24 and '25, but you can see, we're not building substantial contingencies, so the, the rates are really as low as we can, can set them and maintain that revenue sufficiency to preserve the required contingencies we need in our fund. So at that, I'll, I'll pause for any rate discussion before I move on to landfill siting. I don't have anyone on the board at this time for comment, so, I mean, I think we can move forward, I mean, it's math.
Right.
I mean, I don't know really much, much to debate. I would, I would like to see if we can get the numbers, because Commissioner Ron posed a really good question, what the surrounding areas are charging. If we could get those numbers, you have your staff try and figure that out while we're here, that would be great. Otherwise, I think you can move on. Okay, we'll, we will certainly bring it back at, at a later date, and we'll try to get it before, before we're adjourned here today. Commissioner Cruz.
Sorry, I had something else up on my screen. Yeah, so just to make sure, because this is a, is this a work session? Yeah, so we're not voting on this, you're going to bring this back based upon direction of this board. The real discussion here, because this is our third or fourth work session on garbage collection this calendar year, so I look forward to the September work session on, on solid waste. So we've already signed this extension, correct?
Correct.
And we're already starting, what, September 1st, October 1st?
October 1st.
We're going to get charged for this. So this isn't so much a discussion of what does Pinellas pay or Hillsborough, I, yeah, sure, I'd like to see those numbers, but we're now on the hook for this extension for two years, because we opted not to do the long-term contract, which is great, because that means we all get to vote on solid waste increases twice, right now, and then again 24 months from now, when the permanent one comes back, and I'm sure inflation isn't helping that. So this isn't so much really a question, as, as the chair said, this is math. We're paying this, the county is paying this. The question is now, do we go into a massive deficit and default on this, or do we charge people the amount to cover the cost of it? This isn't really up for discussion at this point in time. The only question is, do we charge people for the, the trash that we're picking up, or do we find other sources of funding within the county to make up a shortfall for people? That's really our only discussion, we don't really have that, because you're an enterprise fund, so.
Correct.
We'd have to find that money elsewhere, like bonding or borrowing money just to pay for an extension of trash, which clearly doesn't work, because you got to pay back those bonds, and then it just makes the next increase that much larger. So this isn't really a question, this is more of a statement, and we're just acknowledging the statement that we have to increase these to cover the cost of the extension, otherwise we're going to go broke.
Correct.
Okay, so I make sure we're on the same page.
All right, next, we have solid waste disposal, so this is, what do we do when Mina Road runs out of capacity? Where do we bring our waste? So for context, for some of the future slides, this, this slide shows that the latest report to DEP, we have 17.8 years of remaining capacity. DEP, we have 17.8 years of remaining capacity. In the updated analysis that we've performed as part of the siting analysis, we've updated those projections and it looks like we have closer to 15 years of remaining capacity, which sounds like a long time, but in the world of building a new landfill, acquiring the property and getting permits, it's not a lot of time. So we're really at a point where we need to move forward decisively. And then this last bullet, you can, we show that we have existing operation costs at the landfill of about $20 million today. We're escalating those up to about $30 million per year by the end of the projected life of the existing landfill. So those numbers will become important as we look at the costs of some of the options further into the slides. So roughly speaking, we have these five options for what do we do with our waste going forward. The first is, can we add additional capacity at the current Lena Road landfill? The second is a thermal conversion technology, so primarily it's a waste-to-energy facility. And then options three through five, it's really kind of a matrix of options. It comes down to, we can build a new landfill. It could be in county, at a county, we could do it by ourselves, we could do it in partnership with another public entity or we could do it in partnership with a private entity. So the first of those options is adding capacity at Lena Road. So our consultant has crunched the numbers and looked at the existing facility. It is currently broken up into three stages. Stages one and three are currently closed and stage two is where we are doing our filling operations today. Option one on the slide here is optimizing that existing stage two. Option two would be optimizing the entire landfill, existing footprint and the current maximum permitted height. So no increase to the height at that site, no increase to footprint as well. And then options three through six are increasing or spreading out into some additional areas that are on the Lena Road property already. So I'll give you some more details on each of those in the following slides, but just to, if I can show the next slide, please? Just to show a projected impact from any of those options, you can see option one would add about three and a half years. Option two, within the existing footprint, the existing maximum height, we could add upwards of 21 years to the life of Lena Road. If we tried to expand upon the footprint that's there now, we could add anywhere from about four years to 12, 12 and a half years with those additional options. So next slide, more details on option one. So this is just looking at our current stage two, no increase to permitted height, no increase to landfill footprint. It just changes how we do our filling operations. So we have maybe a slightly steeper slope on the sides and we have to manage our stormwater accordingly to make sure that we can optimize that available airspace. Option two is very much similar to option one, but we go back to stages one and three that are closed. So one of the other benefits that we could potentially obtain from this option, in addition to 21 more years of capacity, is when we look at the stages one and three, there's a lot of fill material that was put in place to make sure that we have the proper level. So as that solid waste settles, we need to bring additional fill. If we open these cells back up and maximize the available airspace, we can take that fill out and use it for other purposes. Now, it doesn't sound like a lot, that how much value could there be in soil, but we've crunched some numbers and the available soil that we could take from stages one and three has about, a value of about $2.5 million. So that can help to offset some of the costs of any sort of expansion at Lena Road. And then options three, I'm not going to spend too much time on the details for these unless there are questions, but if we, there's different ways that we can potentially expand the footprint. Some of it would be a standalone cell and others would tie into the existing cell, so it gets into some of the engineering and the challenges. And then permitting for that is going to be the biggest challenge. Option six, if we can jump to that, that's our maximum lifespan that we could do at Lena Road. With a combination of option two plus option six, we would be looking at it potentially somewhere in the order of magnitude of 30 extra years. Because as projections go out, we get fewer and fewer extra years. So if you do two plus six, it's not just the two years added together because the future years have a higher projected waste volume. All right, this is, oh, you're a smart guy, so we hired you, stuff like this. Commissioner Cruz, I mean, seriously, it's good news. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, we had a long talk about this on my previous, I honestly don't know why the rest of the options are here. You can go through them and explain them, but we had this conversation, like this seems like a no-brainer. Not only is it substantially cheaper for a massive amount of additional time and any way you crunch those numbers, the per-year benefit of doing something like this is incredible and you're not talking about doubling the footprint of a landfill, you're not talking about encroaching on houses, you're really talking like a nine to 10-foot height difference on something that's already well over 100 feet. So it's not even noticeable anyplace and a slight change in slope, you wouldn't even really notice a meaningful, visible change in this landfill and you're talking an additional two to three decades worth of utilization for, and the cost not only was so cheap but then you had the fill which nets it. But also, we voted to start a procurement on looking at the methane gas collection and the longer we can use this landfill, the more we can monetize that and generate revenue on a revenue stream from that, which makes it that much more attractive. In our brief discussion, without having actually run numbers, it appeared to us, this is almost free to do it this way, once you factor in the revenue, if not maybe even profitable to do this. Like, I was like, why are we even having the rest of these conversations? It makes absolutely no sense. We're sitting on a reserve of $35, $40 million right now for the future of the landfill, which now can either be reassigned or really pushed back for decades. I mean, I'm not saying to dump it, but you're talking about a meaningful, meaningful length of time for potentially not only no money but possibly a profit generating scenario. I don't know why we were having the rest of the discussions, honestly. You did an amazing job of coming up with a very unique, out-of-the-box approach to fixing a problem that's been plaguing this board for years and years as we stressed over locations and plans and future. To me, this, when we had this discussion for quite some time the other day, it just, it sounded like great and I was really happy that you were able to come up with such a unique solution, not only for this board to discuss but for the benefit of everybody here in Mattie County.
And thank you, but I do want to redirect some of the praise for finding these concepts to our staff out at the landfill. This is not, not I personally come up.
I meant you and the general utility department staff as a whole, you're just the representative in front of me.
Yeah, very, very, very well done. Commissioner Ballard.
So I agree with everything that Commissioner Cruz said on this issue. I think we had a similar discussion, but one thing that I wanted to add is that I do think that even as we expand the landfill, we still need to continue moving forward with siting for the new landfill because eventually the land is going to just become so expensive and it would be such a huge expense to do all at once. I think that giving us the ability to kind of do it slowly and to explore these sites that we've already looked at, I think is just a really smart and proactive thing to do even as we expand our capacity and extend the life of the current landfill.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, just a quick, we had the same discussion about acquiring something in that 1,100 to 1,500 acre massive way out, you know, whether it's through something that, you know, mosaic or somebody's using or just available site in general, because we could always acquire it, not that it's cheap today compared to what it would have been 10 years ago, but it's certainly cheaper than what it'll be 10, 20, 30 years from now. So acquiring that now sets future boards up and there's things we can do with it. If it's regular land, we could turn it into a preserve for three decades, so a whole generation can use it, observe it, if it's a mosaic kind of thing and they're almost done with it. We talked about, you know, like an Alafaya-type, you know, turn it into a dirt bike, mountain bike kind of facility for the short term. I'm just saying, it's usable land, it's not like we're just parking money for nothing. It could become a community benefit for decades before we ultimately convert it to a future landfill, but that's one less burden, that's one less thing we have to think about, even though most of that reserve, I believe, was more towards the permitting and the closure of the existing one, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that, you know, hopefully the purchase for the long-term at 10,000 acre, whatever it works out to be, is substantially cheaper now because that wasn't really the intent of that.
Yeah, well said. Any further discussion on landfill? Okay. Well done, Evan. Oh, here comes the lawyer. Just when everyone was on the same page and in agreement.
It won't be that bad, but there are a couple of points I do want to make, which is...
You should have been a dentist with those predictions.
First, yeah. I don't know, attorney, dentist, you have to weigh the downsides there. The, there was a lawsuit decades ago when the landfill was first sited where it is now between a predecessor, I think, of SMR and the county. And that's why the landfill is so nice compared to a lot of other landfills. And so this is, I'm really glad to see this option, but I think it is important that everybody be cognizant that that, there was a settlement and there was an agreement between the county and SMR or its predecessor about how we're going to operate that landfill. And so we do have to make sure the external impacts do not increase, but it sounds like you've already addressed that, which is very good news.
Yeah, we looked at the covenants and I apologize that we did not have a conversation before this meeting.
It's all right. Busy time. Yeah. Good, I'm glad to hear that you've reviewed that because it is important to comply with those. That could trigger some much bigger problems that could kind of make it more difficult for the board to look at this, what appears to be a very good solution. There are some bond covenants, particularly when it comes to taking waste out of the county. There is a bond covenant that may prohibit that. It could, we could, through the issuance of bonds, do what's called springing amendments where we amend that bond covenant, but if we're going to do that, we need to do that like 10 or 15 years ahead of time because it, you have to sell enough bonds to where there's 51% of the bondholders have consented to that amendment before it applies. So it's something that we'd have to get with bond council and program way ahead of time if that's something that the county does at some point and want to look at. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Evan? Do you feel like you have good consensus on all this? I do if there's not a desire to go through the additional slides.
No, sir, I think you've shown us the obvious, you know, best options here.
Very good.
Yeah, no point in going through lesser options. All right, do you have anything further for us today?
Nothing further for me.
Okay, then we're going to open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on any of the items in today's workshop? Sir, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gene Brown, Mayor, City of Bradenton, Bradenton. So I just want to thank you to the council, the commission and the staff for doing a great job explaining that. Obviously, the City of Bradenton went through some changes with our recycling a couple years back and the goal was to actually try to improve recycling, which we have done, but it's more of a drop-off type instead of a curbside. So, but ultimately, our goal is to go back to curbside, working with the county and I know other municipalities have been involved in it at times, so we appreciate the county commission working with us. And environmentally, you can drive a lot of the city streets on certain days when we were doing curbside and you'd see a Waste Pro truck or Waste Management truck recycling on the one side with the City of Bradenton truck right behind it recycling. So we actually had two trucks. So environmentally, we're kind of defeating the purpose. Plus, unfortunately, as an educational tool, a lot of citizens were putting other things that weren't recyclable in there, so most of ours was going to the landfill ultimately at a great expense to us for cost. And we never did charge for recycling when we went through that, when we started it years ago with the curbside. So we appreciate you keeping us involved with it and trying to work it out because as we've all, I've heard today, as the City of Bradenton with our council, all our administration, we are about recycling. It's not that we want it to eliminate it, we want it to keep it going. And if you look around the, especially the east part of the country, I made about 20 phone calls to different municipalities and a lot of them eliminated it because it just, they couldn't feasibly keep doing it. We in the city did not do that, but we're working forward and we appreciate your effort in having us involved in it, so thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. We appreciate you sitting through the whole workshop and taking it all in and Councilwoman Barnaby, appreciate you coming down as well. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward for public comment at this time? All right, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment then. Is there anything else for the good of the order here, commissioners? All right, we're adjourned.